Meeting to order, I need a motion to adapt this evening's agenda.
I'm moved.
Danny, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Gary. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, I need to, I need a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
Linda, any questions regarding the minutes? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda, I need a motion.
So moved.
Kath?
Second.
Linda? Any questions regarding the personnel section of the consent agenda? Okay.
No.
All, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then that's carried. The remainder of the consent agenda, there are quite a few items, any motion?
So moved.
Kathy? Any questions regarding the, the items in the consent agenda?
No.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried as well. Okay, I know we have a couple of presentations, I don't have a president's report, so I'm gonna turn this over, I'm not sure if I'm turning it over to Bob or to Cory, so one of you.
I'm here, I'm here Cory, you can turn it over to me, first I want to begin by recognizing our Board of Education, this is Board Appreciation Week and just, you know, publicly thanking our board for all the work that goes on behind the scenes that you do for the children and for our entire community, so thank you, thank you, thank you very much for all that you do as volunteers of school board members, so thank you so much. Just want to update you quickly, we had a guest, a keynote speaker last week, Todd Setnar, who talked to our staff about elite mindset and really set the stage for the day focusing on goal setting, personal goals and obviously work goals as well, which led perfectly into our superintendent's conference day to go back to buildings with staff and and principals and talk about goals for the year, really dig into to what those goals are gonna look like, so they did a great job working on that, it'll be a continuous work in progress here for a few weeks, they'll continue to to look back at those and make adjustments as they go, so we're pretty excited about how the day finished up. We also had a short training with a company called Nepres that we're working with, and Nepres is a career-based web, web company that allows students to be able to have virtual speakers from all sorts of different employment and workforce, so it gives them opportunities to be able to seek out different careers that they might be interested and talk to a real person within that, so example, we had a biochemist come into our chemistry class and talk to the students about what they do, how they became a biochemist, what schooling they had to do to to go into that field and, you know, talked about salary and different things, so they really get an opportunity to learn about careers, so we're pretty excited about how this fits into the work that we're doing, you know, locally around workforce development, so I'm extremely happy with the entire day. You're gonna have a presentation tonight, the second one I believe, which is a newly found partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, which we're really, really excited about to get that going, so you'll hear a little bit more from Andy Buxbaum and Mrs. Jill Teeter, who represents the Boys and Girls Club. Also want to thank our, our community, homecoming was great, we had an exceptional week of you know, students, students dressing up and showing their school spirit, we had good crowds at different events. You know, the weather was a little dicey for our dance, but I think the kids had a good time regardless, so really, really pleased with where things are currently at, so I'll turn it over now, and Sean, I'm not sure if you have our IT students who are gonna join us tonight with Mrs. Castroline, who manages the students throughout the summer and throughout the school year, so we have a team of IT student workers, which you're familiar with, and it changes, you know, we have students that graduate out of the program and new students that come in, and it's just a tremendous experience for students to be able to gain some work-based experience and really learn learn about IT and learn about working with people and collaborating with, with staff throughout the entire district, so there are, there are go-to folks. You know, our teachers will call on students to have them come help them with issues that arise, so it's a, it's a pretty neat program that you know, we continue to build, so they're gonna talk a little bit about that tonight.
It's great.
Are you ready for us?
Yes, we are.
Alright, alright. First of all, thank you for having us here tonight, so we can share what we've been doing in the IT department and also and how we've gotten the school prepared for school. I have invited Jacob Crassin and Hunter Georgia this evening to kind of talk, you know, give their perspective on what they, you know, the IT and what we've been working on, but I do have a presentation that I wanted to share, but I just don't know if I can just share my screen or, or how that works, alright, got it. Hold on. Can't quite get that, hold on. There we go. Alright, so, like I said, we have Jacob and Hunter here to, you know, share with you their insight, but I just wanted to reintroduce myself to everybody, I'm Heather Castroline and this summer I was, I transitioned from high school earth science teacher into leading the IT department, and it's been an awesome, you know, start to everything, and this summer we hit the ground running and we had a lot of of work to do to get the classrooms and teachers and students and everyone up and ready for school. So I just thought I'd give you a little overview, as Cory had said, we have quite a few students in the program, but we currently have twenty-five during, and they worked all summer, the twenty-five students. Six of them were college interns and five of them were returning, but we had fourteen new people join our department, so that, that is, that was exciting, but that also meant that those fourteen new people, they had to kind of make sure they understood and learned all the different ways and all, and how the IT program works. And so that's just a little overview of what we have, and I wanted to spend some time, and I'll let Jacob chime in with this, but during, in the, in the IT program, it's not just the IT work and getting things ready, but there's a whole host of other skills that we need to work on to improve and to help everybody in our district. So I kind of highlighted some of the big ones that we work on in order to accomplish the tasks that I have on one of the slides to share with you, our work that we did. Teamwork, really, really important, they work as teams and they collaborate with each other on how to figure out how to, you know, what's my project, what's my task, and how am I gonna get that done? We have leaders, we look on students to, you know, work on leadership skills, and so students will be asked to lead a particular team, you know, through a set of different projects or skills that we we have. Communication, as Cory had mentioned, you know, these students, they're, you know, they help manage the help desk and they walk into classrooms and help teach you know, or help support teachers and help them through some of the issues that they might be having. And same with skills, lots of IT skills that they're building. Jacob, is there anything, or Hunter, anything that I'm missing in terms of skills that you feel that we focus on?
No, none that I can think of. What about you, Jacob?
Um, I think you put, you hit on them pretty well.
Okay. Yeah, so teamwork is a big one for, for us, working, come in, we have kids from all different kinds of they come from different I don't know, different avenues, and so coming together and working as a team is really, really important. But also the communication, when you're working in team, it is important to be able to communicate what, what you need to have done and what maybe not, is not getting done, and those can be always difficult, you know, things as well. Summer, so Jacob, do you mind just kind of going over an overview of all the summer work that we did?
Sure. So all the things we've been doing have included working in classrooms to disconnect all of the computers and the equipment, and then reconnecting it and setting up classrooms as well as other computer labs within all of the buildings to get the teachers and just the whole building set up. We've also been running cabling throughout the, many of the buildings between AES, OMS and OFA, and that's involved punching down the network cable to get the, the cables up and running, and that's also involved testing the cabling to make sure we've done our job correctly and then patching back in our MDFs and IDFs, main distribution frames and intermediate distribution frames. We've also been working on getting iPads built for kindergarten and third grade to get those up and running for the students as well as seventh and tenth grade. We've also been working on working with our help desk and help at home to troubleshoot with students and teachers for whatever the issues they're having.
So I don't know, he, he was rattling off a lot of different terminology and I had to learn all of that this summer, it was really, it was a lot of fun. I asked a lot of questions, but these guys are really, really helpful and patient with me, and that was another word I didn't use before, but I think patience was another big skill that our students work on, especially with someone like me learning the ropes and, and me asking ten million questions even though they've just answered them five minutes ago. Alright, so Hunter comes, he has opportunity to come in the morning, so Hunter, do you mind kind of just doing a quick highlight of in the morning when you come into work? You know, what are some of this, some of the things that you, you do in the morning to get things right, up and ready?
Yeah, well, one of the things that we've been doing recently is building iPads, so we're signing kids into the iPads. Mostly the newer students or kindergarten, seventh grade, tenth grade, third grade. Recently, we have also been punching down cables and patching them into the network, mostly the science rooms, which have been under construction lately. We also, I, I haven't done this, but other kids have run cables to get the cameras in the high school up and running. We check the help desks for issues like teachers in different buildings, normally we don't go over to AES, but if it's in OES or the high school or the middle school, we'll run down and give them different items like today we, not sure which teacher, but we handed her a mic so she could get her Zoom up and running, we do that mostly to, for OES lately. And we also have been wiping iPads so that they can be reused.
Awesome, thank you, Hunter. So the last item I have to share is just some of the accomplishments, they talked about running cable, and I just wanted everyone to kind of get an understanding of how much cable they've actually run. Our project at AES, we were asked to run the cabling for the new classrooms, there are about eighteen of them, and the kids ran wiring from the network closet down to those classrooms and punched them down like they said, tested them and got them up and running for those teachers. Even at OES, even though there wasn't the construction, there's still cabling to be run with our new PA and clock system that's going on, same with the middle school, so a lot of spending time running those cables through the ceilings and just getting an understanding of what that's like, it was kind of amazing for me to be able to watch them and see all of the things that are beyond the drop tie, you know, the drop ceilings to see everything that's up there and how it gets, you know, everything works in our school. Where, where, we worked hard to get the art and science rooms up and running for the, the teachers to feel comfortable in there, and then we're still working on, well, we spent a lot of time, we're going through just about every classroom in the whole district, making sure that was up and ready for school. And since the first day, well, since September first, these guys have been working hard to resolve over five hundred and twenty different help desk tickets. So they, they are constantly working and learning and collaborating and communicating, and it's just been a great experience for me, learned a lot in this last few months, and I'm sure Hunter can attest to that too, he's probably learned as, as much as me, if not more, because he's up there experiencing more of it than I am. But we just want to say thank you, or, you know, spend some time sharing what we're doing in the IT department, and, and thanks for having us.
Well, thank you, wonderful, thank you.
Thanks Heather, thank you Jacob and Hunter for, for joining us tonight to share your experiences, we really appreciate that. Now, as you can see, this, this program's evolved over several years now, and when you look at the numbers of students that you know, are working, you know, for the district on our campus, whether it be through IT, public relations, or they're working in the maintenance department or custodial athletic interns, and really it allows students to have an authentic experience beyond just being in the classroom, helps them develop many lifelong skills that they'll need as they go into the workforce someday, so it's been really, really exciting to watch that evolve. What they didn't mention is they also had the challenge of construction going on in two buildings, so they had to work around some of that as well, so they had some collaboration with, with some contractors and construction management folks, so they did a great job working through those types of issues that popped up, so thanks again, guys, for all that you do, you know, they really, they really are the backbone for our IT department and the knowledge as you hear that comes from these kids is pretty incredible, so thanks, guys. Up next, so, next item for presentation, we have Andy Buxbaum and Jill Teeter, who is here with us, joining us tonight from the Boys and Girls Club, and they're gonna talk about a relationship that we are igniting to get things back going here locally in the community between the school district and the Boys and Girls Club. So I'll turn it over to Andy and Jill.
Thanks, Mr. Green. Hey, Marcy, I updated this since I sent this to you, do you think you can get off and I can get, put mine up?
Sure can.
Thank you. Can everybody see that? Alright, cool. Thank you, Mr. Green, and to the board for allowing us to present tonight, Jill Teeter is on with me as well, she's the exec, the executive director at the Boys and Girls Club, Tioga County, I promised her that she would not have to present, so I'm gonna go through the presentation, but she will, she will speak a little bit at the end, but I want to uphold my, my promise to her on that. We've been working, Mr. Green, myself, Ryan Hollenback, Luke McAvoy, with the Boys and Girls Club over the last couple of months, putting a program together where, where basically we're, we're trying to revitalize our partnership with the club. We've always had a very good relationship with the club over the years, but in the last couple of years, specifically, you know, activities between the club and the school have kind of fallen off a little bit, and we want to get that back going again, we want to introduce our students to the club and give them an opportunity to experience all the, the great things that the club has to offer beyond our, our school day and what we do here. Some things that the club are looking to offer are some wellness and intramural activities for grades three through six. We want, another goal is to have a cost-effective opportunity for kids after school, which with the partnership that, that we've come together on, that opportunity will be free for our students going into this, this time period. And the club would like to offer a safe environment for kids after school, for enrichment, physical health and wellness, and to provide, you know, support socially and academically. So those are the basic goals of, of what we're looking to accomplish this year and the next year, and then beyond. Specifically, some of the activities for grades three through six are listed here, our students will our grades three through six students will be able to go to the club from three to five every day, that school's in session, so a hundred and eighty day, school day a year. Participating in all of these activities, I'm not gonna go through and read all of these, but the club and Jill and her staff, their new athletic director, Mike, they put together a lot of really great activities and opportunities for our students to participate in after school. Keep in mind, we're also running a, a free after-school, after-care program for our students, grade K through five right now. Students that are in grades three, four and five that are participating in our after-school care program could also participate in this program if they wanted to, so it's just expanding the opportunities that we're already offering, being able to introduce our students to the club and, and have them go over there and have some experiences as well. You can see on the bottom, there will be snacks available as well when our students get to the club every day before they start participating in all of these different activities. Another, another piece to this is, is extracurriculars and athletics. So we, from three to five, we're gonna have our grades three through six students. From five to seven every day, our, our high school students, middle school and high school students, grade seven through twelve will have access to the club as well. The club and their athletic director, Mike, will be leading intramurals. We're also have full access to their indoor and outdoor facilities daily for athletic practices or different events that we would like to run over there as well in collaboration with them. And then obviously just year-round collaboration with the club, our, their executive director Jill and our district staff, myself, Mr. Green, both of our athletic directors, and then district support staff, we're gonna, we're gonna see how things go and how the club can, can man things up and staff the, the program to start off and where they need assistance and where we need to add support staff as well over there to assist the programs, we're gonna do that as well. We're gonna have students, the registration was open yesterday, but we're gonna be sending a, or I should say Luke is gonna be sending a blast out tomorrow to promote this, but basically, the registration will be on our family ID site, so people can go right on to our website and register for the club through our, our family ID registration portal. But it'll have the Boys and Girls Club logo here and, and their youth membership registration form that's required by them. And to kick this off, there's been a official kickoff schedule for the twenty-fifth of October, it's gonna be at the club. We're gonna have representatives from the club, our school district, Chamber of Commerce, and, and really promote this great opportunity that we're getting together with them on, you know, to open their doors to our students and to introduce the club to, to our kids here in WeGo that, in, in Apple Lake, and that wouldn't normally maybe go there on their own, so I think this is gonna be a win-win for our district and the club, and, and we're just really, really excited about it. I know Jill's on here, I told her she didn't have to present, but I, I think she is gonna say a few words.
Well, I think you covered everything, thank you for having me, and I just want to say I am so grateful to reignite this relationship between the school and the club. It's something that was very important to me coming on board here at the Boys and Girls Club. We have had just, we have been thrilled working with a team there at the school and their professionalism and helping us to make this happen. Without the support of the school right now, I'm not quite sure where we would be, because our numbers have been very low, and it was a little, it's been a little bit scary for us coming out of the pandemic and trying to get kids back out of their house and feel safe to go and out and do things again, so this partnership is gonna allow us to fill the building again with children and laughter and provide some wonderful programs for enrichment, and Andy really detailed everything for you already, but on behalf of myself, our Board of Directors and our staff, we are very grateful and hope that this will last for many, many years to come. I would say probably eighty-five percent, from, from what I can tell, I'm looking back at numbers of the school districts, our main school district that we serve is a WeGo Apple Lake, and so this just makes wonderful sense for us, and we're looking forward to hopefully impressing you guys with what we can do over here, and if you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer, you can reach out to us. Looking forward to working with Andy moving forward on programming. And really, that's all, he covered everything else.
Thank, thanks Jill, and thank you Andy for all the hard work behind the scenes to make this happen, I think, you know, as they had mentioned, there's, there's a couple of things we're really trying to do and work with the club on, one is exposure, getting kids exposed back to the Boys and Girls Club, because it's such an important piece of our school community, so getting them exposed, getting them in the facility, letting them see that, you know, there's good things that are going on there, that kids will have fun and access to different opportunities and the hopes that they go on off-peak times, that maybe they tend and go to different programs at the club on weekends or in the summer, or different, different times throughout the year, so it's really about that exposure. The other piece we've worked really hard on is just barriers for students to be able to attend the club. Sometimes it's difficult for, for families and, you know, paperwork can sometimes be an issue, and costs sometimes can be an issue, so we're trying to remove those barriers to engage kids into the club and, and give them as much exposure as we can, so thank you guys so much, we appreciate it, we're really looking forward to this relationship.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, we're all looking forward to it, Jill, so everything is gonna go great, I'm sure it will, you and Andy did a great job, and we're, we're really looking forward to the, the partnership. So thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Glad to do it. Moving on to the business at hand, we have a Health Services RFP there, it's for your information only, so if you haven't had a chance to read it, please do so. But that was all we had as far as district business tonight. So, we've reached the public comments section of the agenda tonight, and I believe, Sean, we have someone waiting to come on. And Aldo Lemon. So, I guess with that, we'll
I'll move, I'll, I'm gonna move you over to panelists, which means you'll be able to turn your camera on and speak as soon as you pop up over there. Said she was rejoining as a panelist.
Okay.
See if I did that right. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, am I the only outsider here?
Well, you are tonight, you're welcome.
Okay. Alright, well, just have a couple of questions. So first I was wondering if you could say why is it that the board is not meeting in person? And then, couple of commentaries or questions. So, I've been, come, come aware of some of the comments from AG Garland about school boards and parents, and I understand that the School Board Association of Pennsylvania has withdrawn from the National School Board related to the letter that they did send to AG Garland about parents at school board meetings, so I was just wondering what your, if you have any thoughts or comments on that. What do you think about, what do you think of parents that disagree with you? And what do you think of the, the role of the parent in a student's education, because I've also heard comments saying that well, the role of the parent is not to say what their children are learning. I'm saying this because I grew up in a communist country in Albania, until I was thirteen, it was communist, and it was not the role of my parents to be involved in education, and if they ever said anything, they would go to jail. And so, this is very emotional for me.
Well, we appreciate that, Aldo, and I'm gonna try to address some of this, but Cory, or feel free to jump in if you, if you wish. As far as why the meetings are being held the way they are right now, I think Cory addressed that, he sent out a
He sent out a um rationale on that, but it basically just comes down to safety. Uh and uh at this point, uh we're just trying to uh maintain that that level of safety. Uh it's no other reason than that. Um and until things uh improve, I think we had an uptick again in Tiger County. Am I right, Corey?
Yeah, we've had some uptick in cases recently.
Yeah, and we obviously, as a board, can't control that. Um and we know that the the mask issue is uh uh there's two sides to that. And until it can be resolved, uh we're strictly trying to look out for the safety of of everyone, uh everyone. As far as our um uh attitude towards parents becoming involved, I I can't really speak to that as well as you, Corey, but I certainly wouldn't discourage it in any way. Uh and uh you know, we always welcome uh our parents into the meetings and are, you know, uh very interested in hearing what they have to say. So uh beyond that, I'm going to turn over to you, Corey.
Yeah, um no, absolutely. Mr. Civic is is absolutely right. Obviously, parents are our partners. That's the number one relationship that um you know, allows the school district and students to be successful is how strong that relationship is. That's really important to us. That's why we we do frequently send out um, you know, surveys or thought exchange because we want to hear the feedback uh from folks. And and we recognize and understand that, you know, there's, there's things that uh folks would like to see uh improved. And we certainly take those uh very seriously uh when we look at everything. So that that relationship's crucial uh again, to the success of of students and and our entire school community.
Thanks, Corey.
All right, and then I have one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have one last question, if possible.
Go ahead.
Um so do you have any information on, or is there any information posted on the uh social emotional learning that I know is happening at the elementary level? As far as I know, it hasn't started in the middle and high school. But from what I am uh reading uh about this, I do have some red flags. So would it be possible to view what is being discussed in these sessions with the the children?
Yeah, absolutely, Aldo. You could, um the best way to do that would be to contact Heath, Georgia. He's our Director of Administration. He can point you in the right direction um of that information. The state has some essential guidelines or guidance um on social emotional learning. And really, the the core pieces are self-management, social awareness, uh relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Um we're, we're just getting kind of started into this realm. Uh we do a lot of work around team building, uh collaboration, understanding roles, um leadership pieces that all come into play uh into these sessions because our students do a lot of STEM-related work. And you know, one of the things that we hear from employers all the time is is around the four Cs. And can they communicate? Can they collaborate? Can they think critically? You know, can they work with each other? Um you know, and with different roles within different teams. So there's a lot of components to uh primarily around that. But Mr. Georgia could point you in the right direction to to share any of that information with you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, too. Okay, Shawna. Let me know when we can go back. Are we okay, Sean?
Yeah, you're okay to continue. Thanks.
Okay, um. Well, before we adjourn, I think we have a few of our principals with us, don't we? Start with Kenny. Mr. Francisco, are you there?
Getting there. Sorry, it took me a second. I was throwing down tonight.
Good, Ken.
Yeah, no, just to reiterate, uh Spirit Week was great last week. Um uh we had a high participation rate uh in every um uh activity that we had during the day. Uh pep rally was was great outside. Uh the kids really had a good time. And uh I think it was nice uh um to get the dance in Saturday night. Uh we did have a um lot of kids there. I think it was good just to see them out and and having some fun. So um we had a good week.
Great.
Great. Tom, BD.
Good evening. How are you, Gene?
Good, Tom.
I just, I would reiterate that Spirit Week was a lot of fun seeing those high school kids come back. Uh it was, it was a good time. Um we had a great superintendent's conference day. We've been doing a lot of work on our PLC as far as goal-setting, evaluating essential curriculum and the assessments that we're going to use as far as to assess whether or not students are learning. Mr. Schofield and I have been spending a lot of time lately together. We've been working on our own goals um and uh encouraging our staff to be collaborative. Um we're trying to model that behavior. And one of our goals you're going to see in the future come out is we really want to make sure that there's no difference between an AES and an OES student moving forward so that there's no gaps in learning and that they're both getting the same experience. That's, that's what we're working on.
That sounds great, Tom. Mr. Schofield.
Hello, thank you. Um yeah, reiterating what Tom said. Goal-setting is important for us. We're staying on the same page. Uh I think we're doing a good job, you know, really working together between both buildings. Uh that work's going to continue. It's hard work and they're, they're having great conversations. So we're excited about that. Um and again, just to reiterate that having high school students come into the building again over Spirit Week was phenomenal. Uh I think our teachers loved it just as much as the kids did. Uh they got to see former students. It really kind of brought a nice way to wrap up Spirit Week on Friday, and we had a blast and the kids loved it. So I want to thank uh Ryan and Ken making that happen and allows us to have some students come over. It was a lot of fun.
That's great to hear, Phil. Thank you. I don't know if uh this, he, do you have anything for us, Mr. Georgia?
I'm good, Gene. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks. Well done. I guess all I need then is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jason, Jason, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Well, everybody, good night and have a good evening.